Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council work session of Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. So, the first item, discussion of ordinance seventeen dash thirty-two, amending section twenty-one point six three oh three of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown to allow for less restrictions on loading docks in the I-1 zoning district. And Ken, I would like you to come up and talk about this a little bit.
Well, he's, well, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
Um, I got, I have a procedural question for, probably for you Vince or Sarah. The two items that are on the work session tonight also appear on our regular agenda as a second reading. If we end up in our discussions, the work session, realizing that we want to make some pretty substantial changes, and I'm not saying that's the case, but in case it does, where does that take us in our regular council meeting when we get to our second reading? Do we table it then and go back to?
Guy, they didn't have, they didn't have these fancy microphones when I was last here. You can table and move forward at, after you take it off the table at some later point, or you can make a decision based upon the substantive changes on whether you want to go forward on the second reading or not. Depends upon the level of substantive changes. If they are with, within what is fairly described as the ballpark of the substance of the ordinance and there isn't a major change, then you can go forward. But if there's a substantive major change in the context of the ordinance, you can't, you should go to the table route.
So, that being the case, I mean, we'll see what happens at the council meeting. But I, was my intention to give a little more time between the work session and action, but the way that we had advertised it prevented that, so we'll cross that bridge later tonight. But this is an ordinance which I brought forward because I think that it's one that we have many examples of the ordinance having not been complied with in the recent past. And I don't like having ordinances on our books that we don't intend to enforce, or ordinances which don't make sense. If we're not enforcing it, is there a reason? If that's because it's a, not a situation which makes sense, then we should address that head-on. I think this is an example of an ordinance which could be revised, so that's why I brought it forward. So, Ken, if you want to go.
Yeah, and actually, this is, I went out and just did a real cursory survey. I kind of drove through town a little bit and I found twenty-two times where, where the loading dock, or berth, not a loading dock, but an actual berth was adjacent to a, a street. And this has been going for a long time. Some of these really old structures have been here a long time, somewhere within the last five, ten years. And the strange thing about it was, is there were six of them in the C-three area, ten in the I-one area, five in the C-one area, and one in the business park district. Now, I didn't drive through every single area looking, but I didn't even find one in the I-two area, the only place where they're allowed. So, you know, it has come up in the past and they've just kind of slipped through the crack because they really didn't make a whole lot of sense. So, I'm hoping as a group, we decide that, I mean, just to put somebody on the back because it's not bad, but you can go right down to the post office. The post office is illegal to our ordinance because our loading docks on the north side of the building all face the street. So, I mean, and the post office has been here a long time, so. That's how long and how, as I said, so I strength, strong consideration for limiting even more than what we're, I propose as I-one, I-two. I don't think any commercial district should be as, I think we should just need to protect the residential areas in one form or another.
The only concern I have, and I've seen it, is where the dock either being proposed or in place has a significant impact on the frontage road that they have to get to it. That's, that's, to me, that's my biggest concern is.
They gotta be able to pull onto the property and access the dock, not access it off the street.
Right, because.
Very easily, well, not easily, but I, I agree with that proposal one hundred percent.
Right, if, if, that's my biggest thing. And, and if we can take care of that, then I don't see problems with the modifications that are being proposed.
Ken, would we have to put, like, restrictions back from the road? Is that, would that take care of that type of?
I think just some kind of general verbiage says that dock access must be provided off street. You know, you can't back off the highway to get into it, or it's not going to work. So, you gotta pull into your parking lot somehow and then access your dock all on your property and not use the public right-of-way to back in itself. So, you're not stopping in the middle of the road, blocking the traffic and everything else without having to spell that out exactly. Well, you got a hundred, you must have a hundred and ten feet or fifty feet or whatever. I think access to the dock must be obtained off your own public way, or private way, I should say.
Would that, if we were to put that language into the current proposed ordinance change, Vince, would that be significant enough that would stop us from voting on that tonight?
Okay, more closely state exactly what you're proposing.
Okay, we talked about, you're, you're, going back to Glenn's question.
I understand. What I'm asking is the specifics of the change that you're talking about.
If, if Ken were to add language in there that would prohibit the access to loading docks from a street, in other words, I come in, now I gotta back up off the street into it, or, or I gotta make a loop on private property, come into the street and go back. If he were to come up with some type of language that would prohibit that, is that significant enough that we should delay the second reading, not knowing what that language is going to be?
Yes, and the reason why is, when you're talking about this ordinance, what we're talking about is screening or not screening, allowing a second, not second. Now, what you're talking about is actual egress and ing, egress and in, egress and ingress. And it's, it's important to make sure that that language is accurate, number one, so that would be an important reason for delay. But number two, this one, the one that's been proposed, does not address the issue of ingress and egress, so it would be a substantive difference.
Ken, I've, I've got a couple of questions. As an, I want to make sure I understand this. As an example, Rob Peterson was here last, last meeting discussing his business. That's in an I-one district, correct?
They're in the business park, aren't they? No, they're I-one, they're I-one, that's correct, yes.
Okay, so, so as I understand it, right now, by all rights, he should not be allowed to have a loading dock in, in that, in that vicinity. Is that correct?
That's correct, but there's three other structures in that vicinity that already has one.
Okay, so, so if, if we were to change this now, he'd be able to have it and it would not need to be screened because there is no residential in his vicinity. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
That's our intent. I, I would have to re-verify, you know, everything we're saying, but yes.
Okay. Now, secondly, if we were to pass this, what kind of transition or grandfathering for all those places out there that, that currently have the, those that shouldn't, what, what does that mean for them? Are, I mean, are we going to be going back and changing anything for what's already out there?
I know you can't see me nodding my head, but no, they're basically going to be grandfathered in. The only stipulation is if they ever do an addition or, or something else to their structure, they change it, whatever existing, then they have to bring it into compliance.
I would like to add, after seeing how many of these are in commercial zones and that we also have these in business park zones, we might want to change that language as well because we just expanded this to include both I-zones. But it, you know, it's, it's probably valid in all non-residential zones because commercial facilities have loading docks as well.
Would we want that, though, Sarah, in our commercial districts, meaning like our C-one, C-two, C-three? But is that, we have them, but is that something that we want?
We've done it very recently, too, like, in the last year.
Half of the twenty-two I just told you about were in commercial, C-three or C-one.
Okay, so if I, if I bought a couple buildings downtown and I knocked them down and I built a new building down there, you'd want a loading dock down there? On, on Main Street, on Kemp?
If you wanted, but see, that's going to be where it's, where it's going to be tough. The C-one will be the hardest district to get it into because you don't have enough lot area to allow for that transfer on your own property to get back into that dock. You're almost going to have to be adjacent to an alley where you could pull down an alley and back from the alley.
Which is, which we don't care.
Which we don't, yeah, no, that would.
Right.
Through the alley is fine, but if you gotta pull out down the street, stop in the middle of the street and then back into it, it's not going to be granted now either, or even the new proposed.
The, if we expanded the language just to include all commercial zones, that would be a problem because there's no setback in the C-one zone, so we would have to tweak that. I, I mean, we could, we could eliminate the C-one zone, but we do have loading facilities in the C-one zone. And if there is room for it, why would we not want it?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't disagree with that.
So, we, we probably gotta tweak that a little bit.
It would appear to me like those issues should be looked at. How, how far does it go into the zones, which, which zones does it cover logically? Are there situations that we don't want it in, even within any of those zones? And then the, the use of, of the access back to the, the docks in regards to the safety factor.
Yeah, because we're still going to have to, they're going to have to provide us some kind of a site plan that's going to show that the truck has the ample area to, to pull off and back into this area, or pull in and back into this area on their own property, so.
If, if we put it in a conditional use, otherwise, if it's just an outright permitted use, I don't know how you'd judge that.
This is, do they have to bring me a drawing and show me that? They could show the traffic patterns of trucks for loading docks.
Okay.
So.
And I, I want to make sure you understand, too, that since the plan commission did not recommend this change, it requires a two-thirds vote of the council in order to pass, so all of you, all seven that are here tonight, would have unanimously voted in favor of approving the language.
It sounds like we're going to have to table it and bring it back rewritten anyway.
Does, does that, if we table it, do we, then we can modify the language and come back for the second reading? Or do you have to have first reading again?
It, again, it depends on, on the substantive change, but what we're, what I'm hearing is it would make sense to come back as a first because we're talking about including additional zones.
Then, why don't we just pull it from the agenda, get the language done, and bring it back? If we have to go back through first read anyway, why not do it that way?
No, I, I talked about, I, I think there's a reason why we, we shouldn't do that and.
That's a good point. That's a good point. Shane has a good point. We do have the public hearing. There might be people that show up to comment.
Yes.
It might, you know, we could have the hearing and then back up, but instead of pulling it.
That's, that's what it was.
And I, it was his idea.
Or pass the one that's proposed in the with the knowledge that we're going to change it right away again, if we're trying to satisfy another issue.
Well, and that's, that's an option as well. I mean, we can, we can change it twice. If, if you're in favor of what it says right now, but doing more, you could pass it tonight and then.
I don't like that idea.
So, let's just look at the timing of this. The first, if we tabled it or voted it down, we're looking at two weeks before the first read again, right?
It, it, it does not need to go back to planning commission, though?
It would need two-thirds without a plan commission recommendation.
Okay, so, so, so we can act on without, without going back through the planning commission, but it would take a two-thirds vote on our part?
Right, it's already come to us with their suggested.
Right.
Denial.
Okay.
So, what we act on, like the mayor said, is going to take two-thirds of us to vote on that and approve it, but.
But we could take it back to the plan commission. It would not affect the council's schedule at all if we redo a first reading. There could be a, a plan commission consideration in between of a revised ordinance, which is different. And the, the plan commission took issue with what was proposed, but they may not take issue, I don't think they're just flat opposed. They didn't like how it was written and they, there weren't any recommended changes, I don't think, but we, we would be able to take it back to the plan commission without further delaying it.
In this process, though, then it would appear like the earliest that it could get approved would be the first meeting of October, correct?
At least, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the earliest.
Yep.
Okay, and what was Mr. Peterson's timeframe for wanting to, not that this hinges on him, but if that's the direction we're going, then.
That was a consideration I was making.
He would have to come back, basically, and seek approval from the council before it gets enacted, was his comments. That's what he stated.
We can't issue a variance.
We can.
We cannot.
We can't.
No, we can write the language, we can vary the, and change the language, but we cannot, we do not have the power to, to issue a variance that is the board of adjustments, so.
Justin corrected my, what I, what I said at the last council meeting was that ordinance, ordinances to which a, an applicant takes issue can be brought before you to the council who passed the ordinance to give a variance, but he said, not in, in every case, in some cases, so we need Vince's opinion as to whether or not this is a case where the council could grant a variance. We do have a variance procedure in our, I don't know that we, we have various procedures in various places in our ordinances.
But.
This is Title twenty-one, and I don't know if this is something that, a variance can be granted from, and so if the council waives a requirement, it's kind of like granting a variance. I'd want, I don't want to put Vince on the spot and make him say it without doing research, but.
I do.
I'd want a legal opinion.
And, and to be perfectly frank, I couldn't if, even if you asked me to speak off the top of my head on it. Yeah, I would, I would have to go through the ordinances just to make sure my reading is correct. And frankly, I'd, I'd need to have the question better defined.
So, if we're going to put this in, but add to it, does it make a difference?
Well, if, if we agree as a council that, that it should be changed in regards to the, the general language without some of the other terms that we talked about, then, then we could agree upon and approve the ordinance language. The problem is, we don't know necessarily whether Mr. Peterson, the things that we have expressed concerns with that should be added, we don't know if that now is included in there, so that could be excluded. We could be approving something and then he have a plan that goes against some of our concerns. That, that's the downside.
Yep.
I don't, you know, not knowing what his, his layout is and his plan is, that could happen. That's the downside or the danger of it. The concern I would have with us approving any kind of variance for him would be, the process of the board of adjustments is such that people request the variance, they either get it or they don't get it, and the only recourse from that is circuit court. They can't come to the council and say, I don't like the response that they got there. That's why I question whether we can actually vary a, a condition that is within our variances like this. I, I, otherwise, you wouldn't have a need for the board of adjustments. They just come to the council all the time. They just bypass us. So, I question whether we can do that, but, you know, again, I'm, I'm not Vince or Justin or Stanton, so, you know, it certainly should get looked into, but I, I don't want to hold up him. Didn't he say this fall? I think he was generic, wasn't he?
Yeah, but even after the October, you still get twenty days after that, too, so.
Oh, before it actually goes into effect.
Yep, so it's two months, basically.
That's kind of a catch twenty-two.
It seems like we ought to adopt this tonight, vote for this tonight, and then make the changes, just like we would any other ordinance later. It's not going to go away. The changes aren't going to go away, so if we vote for it tonight.
May I?
And come back with the changes. No?
I did, you know, I, when, when I provided the, the answer as to, it would be nice to wrap everything up into one, keep in mind that I'm not taking into account the policy and political issues like Dan is identifying. And so, just based on what I say, you, you shouldn't go forward on just this. I'm just saying it would be nice to wrap everything up into one, and if we were going to do that, then we need to go through the process. It, if you wish to go forward on this, you, you certainly can, and then we can have a second ordinance that adds and changes the additions.
Vince, if we, if we agree to what's proposed right now, without the, the additional verbiage that would then yet be coming, can we put any additional conditions on that that are not listed within the ordinance that we're approving tonight?
I'm sorry, conditions on that?
Okay, we approve whatever the, the conditions are today.
Yes.
What's being proposed.
Okay.
We have some conditions that we know we want to add.
Uh-huh.
So, to ensure that the example that we are talking about, that we're trying to accommodate if we can, which is Mr. Peterson's need, then my question is, it's important that those conditions that we want to get into this with the next go-round of, of an ordinance change, I think it's important that they be included in Mr. Peterson's current plan. I don't want to approve the loading dock scenario and then not get what we want with the additional items. For example, again, I'm not seeing his plan. I don't want his plan to where he's going on the road and just backing in. We don't want that. So, could we have, okay, we're going to approve this, but the conditions are, you cannot access the dock directly from the.
Public street.
Public street. I mean, can we put conditions on something? Because then it appears like we're varying, but.
Can, you can put conditions in this ordinance change. You can add language to this ordinance change that are conditional on this change. So, for instance, just speaking off the top of my head, paragraph three, insert a sentence that says, "Access to a loading facility may not occur through the parking of a vehicle on a city street." If.
Yeah, that's it in context.
Yeah, and that, you can have that, you can insert that kind of language into an ordinance that restricts the use of that loading facility. Now, that may create a can of worms with some other ordinances, but that would be part of the cleanup for round two. And then, then it would address the, the needs of Mr. Peterson.
But doesn't that potentially take it back to a need for a first reading, then? I mean.
What I just said?
Yeah.
No, because it's a conditioned on, it, it's just a restriction on where they can park. When, when, I was taking what Ken was talking about was having radiuses and more complex restrictions on access. This is just saying you can't park on a street when you use one.
So, I don't believe he's talking about parking. He's about, talking about coming onto private property, backing in, or being on a public road and backing in off the public road. It's not parking on the public road. It's using the public road as the means to get onto the dock.
You could have a, a similar restriction.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it, I was just using that as, as an example.
Yeah, my, my, have you seen his site plan?
Only a small section of it, never in relation to the whole lot. I just know he wants to add that, on the south side of the property facing the west. I think he has quite a bit of setback there yet, but I have, again, it was just one small corner detail, not in relationship with the entire lot. I think he will have plenty of room to access his without going out into the public way. I think he'll be able to pull in and back in there and do that as we're requesting. And so, I think maybe a simple note just at the end of one and two, you know, in zones I-one and I-two, as long as the party can be accessed off of private property or something for this time until we can really get it cleaned up.
His lot's extremely deep, so he'd be able to, unless he's doing a huge addition, he should be able to add that requirement.
Yep, I think so, too.
Well, because that, my guess is, we won't have another one of these issues before we get this all wrapped up.
No, I'm glad, I'm sure we won't. I'm sure we'll be able to find two of them before it happens.
And I don't want to, I don't want to unnecessarily hold him up, but I don't want to allow something that we don't want.
I agree, and I think with this provision within there, I think he's got enough room on his lot that he can adopt or push it back a little further if he has to on the parallel side without having to make it all the way around the building and have the road all the way around the structure to make it work.
Okay, here, here's the other thing. You said that there's twenty days before it can go into enforcing, anyway, right?
Right.
So, if we approve it, work on the additional language, put the exception or the condition in there that we want, that we can, in whatever format that is agreeable legally, we got twenty days that we could, it could be challenged if his actual site design doesn't get to where we want it to be.
Yeah, he could challenge it.
Can, can we, can we challenge that within, I mean, can the approving body challenge it, or how does that work? We'll put that on Shane. Shane can challenge it. That, that's my, because I don't want to make a big deal of it, but I don't want to find ourselves ten or twenty or thirty days from now going, dang, that's, that's not what we thought, that's not what we wanted. And, and that's the danger of this. If I knew that it wasn't going to be, then I would say, let's get it voted through if that's what we agree to, so he can get going, make his plans. And if we do that and you review his site plan and it's acceptable to you to what we're talking about tonight, we should be good to go. If it, if it ends up, then we'll have to go out on the street and find somebody to oppose it.
Well, you.
I don't know who that'll be.
You could also just pass another ordinance to change it. The council doesn't have to challenge it.
So, that's what I think we should do, then. That's my opinion.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, next item is discussion of ordinance number seventeen dash thirty-three, amending chapter twenty-one point eighty and twenty-one point ninety of the revised ordinance of the City of Watertown to update the sign code. Ken, you can explain this.
Yeah, I'm the one who requested just to come back. I just wanted a few items to be clarified for my, my intent on this thing. I wanted to, to clear, um, basically, the first thing was I had on exempt signs. This is in twenty-one eighty-fourteen, uh, seven. I had construction signs. Says, "One sign per contractor shall be allowed per lot. This sign shall not exceed thirty-two square feet in area and shall not erected the building permit and shall not be erected until a building permit has been issued. A construction sign must be removed within fourteen days after substantial completion of the project." We kind of used that for these guys to put up these little signs all over town, and the purpose of this one is actually for somebody that's doing a building site, you know, putting up a whole new structure and then they'll put a thirty-two square foot sign out there that says, you know, whatever construction company generally's got the bank's name and the owner's name and stuff or other things. And we kind of had, used this for the same intent for these shingler guys to come around and, and stick something in the yard there. I don't know if that was right, wrong, or indifferent, and I was, I was hoping for clarity. Do we want to allow that to happen? Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor, but I was just trying to find something to say yes, no, or maybe, and so I'm just looking for some clarification and, and, and hopefully that we're not going to do it under this, so.
Well, you saw me shake my head.
And that's what I know about, my head was shaking before I ever got there, so.
Um, I understand the new construction, larger building type signs. I don't understand a new home or, or new windows in my house, or new siding on my house, or, gee, I got it painted, or somebody put new sidewalk or concrete in, or, I mean, you can, we can go on and on and on.
I agree. Those guys all have signs on their trailers when they're working there.
They all got signs and new shingles, you know, and, and I just think that, you know what, if you want to put one of them little signs up while you're doing it, go for it. But the minute you're done and you leave, that sign goes with you. go for it. But the minute you're done and you leave, that sign goes with you. There's no purpose for the fourteen days.
I, I would see, like to see something like that within the thing. Do they even need a sign on a premise then? I mean, their trucks all say who they are, their trailers all say who they are. But, I mean, generally, when you have, uh, a new home going up, then there generally is a sign that says, this is the contractor and the materials came from so-and-so. Those have never been a complaint or an issue in the past. They've never been in the public right-of-way in the past.
I mean, I don't have a problem with those, cause I know they're temporary, you know, I, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the roofing signs, or the siding signs, but
As long as they're off the public right-of-way in there during the job.
They gotta go away. You know, I think when you're building a house and it says Cashway or whatever it says on there, when the house is done and your, your part of the project's done, it goes away. Now, I, that's only one of, what I assume are the exempt signs that you're gonna talk about.
Yeah, well, that, no, I got two other ones I wanna discuss too. Was there anybody else that had comments or issues on that?
My question would be, how do we enforce that? You know, if we're talking about fourteen days when someone's done, like Cashway or, you know, a builder or something like that.
Well, you're gonna give me permission with this in ordinance, if anything's in there right-of-way, I can go pick it up, bring it up here, and they gotta come back and fetch it themselves, so.
And that's fine.
See, I like, I like that.
I'm just wondering if we're gonna start enforcing these things, you know, like for something that's, you know, the roofer's done. Well, who says the roofer's done?
Well, when the shingles are on and the vehicle's gone, they're done.
Yeah, I mean, there's some guys, I, I drove around today running some errands, and I got some pictures that I gave Shane on some things, but they've been there for weeks.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just saying we gotta make sure that's enforced.
I don't think they should be allowed to stay for fourteen days.
And they've been kinda told that they could do it fourteen days after the project was done based on this loose interpretation of this ordinance, and that's why I'm looking for this kinda direction and clarification, so that we can have a firm setting and when we go out and tell these people, this is what it is, this is what it is, so.
How do you wanna deal with this? Do you wanna deal with this on an issue-by-issue basis and get a nod of heads here, or how do you wanna do it? Otherwise, you're gonna go through all of these potentially, and then, then what? I
No, hopefully, I mean, I think, I think this one, the one we're talking about now is just an interpretation. And, and I understand, I think, as long as everybody's in kind of an agreement, that nobody's against that issue and only be allowed in time of their period, I think we're fine there. I don't think we need anything more than that. But I am hoping for comment if somebody doesn't. Uh, then the next item is, uh, "Any on-premise portable sandwich board sign, less than ten square feet in area, may remain on display to the public only during the business hours." "We want to add and must be a minimum of ten feet from any surrounding property line." Again, they keep those from, this is in eighty-fourteen, number sixteen, if you're going down there, Pete.
What is a sandwich sign?
Uh, typically, it's just a little bi-fold sign. It's like a sand, on Main Street, you know, they can bring it out. Yep, typically, it's like that. It's got writing on both sides, sale today, or this, that, or the other thing. Anymore, most of them are printed up though, and they're like on those cardboard or hardboard or something like that.
It's not like the, the little political signs,
No, this, this is
But with a commercial message?
We just have to clarify that and try to get rid of some of those other signs that are happening. Uh, under the current ordinance as subjected, there's gonna be a lot of signs that are gonna become prohibited. That you're gonna see around the gas stations and other areas and sticking out in the boulevard, so. Again, I, I guess the biggest comment which is here is that, uh, it's gotta be at least ten feet off the property line again, so it's not sticking way out in front or in front of the yard and stuff. And I'm gonna take no comments as a yes?
I'm good with you.
What, what were you adding to it?
The only thing we're adding is it must be at least ten feet from the property line.
Front sides, roadway?
All of them. Any of them. Protecting your neighbor's rights and your public right-of-ways and visibility and all those other things that come into play.
That would still only be during the business hours, that, that part.
Yeah, but there's too many of them that have twenty-four hours businesses anymore, that they stay out all, all day forever, never get moved or taken in. I think if it was an eight-to-five thing, then at least they would be taking them in, putting them back out, and you wouldn't see them quite as often.
Ken, is there any language in it as to how many of them they can have?
Well, no, I guess this doesn't clarify if what's given, uh, any on-premise portable sandwich board sign? Yeah, that probably should be limited to a number.
Yeah, cause the other thing that I have seen, and, and we'll, I hope we'll get to this, is the use of banners and other things, where we allow one per business, right? Per frontage.
Per frontage, yeah.
Per frontage per business. Well, so I build, and let's just use for example, down on First Avenue where they've got the, the gas, or the, uh, car wash there, and then you've got two little mini malls there. I think there's like seven businesses in there.
Yeah.
We could have, and that's a pretty short area, we could have seven banners in there, the way it's written today, correct?
If they can find a place to put them on their building, yes.
Or out elsewhere.
Out, yeah, well, now, yeah, we're, true.
For example, corner of eighty-one and two-twelve, with the cowboy store there.
Yeah.
There's like seven or eight businesses there. We could have seven or eight banners out there.
We've got four already.
Yeah, we do, and is it one per, for each of the businesses that's there, or is it one per the number of businesses? So, I could
I think it was one per each business there was the intent, so.
Yes.
Four beer signs should be, one beer sign and one pizza sign and one bank sign and one whatever.
I, I agree. Right, okay, I want a clarification on that, cause I think any one of these, as I go through and I look at where I get complaints and where what I look at as problems, it isn't the one-ofs. It's when all of a sudden one of becomes six, or eight, or twenty. I mean, it sounds dumb, but that's what happens. And that's when it becomes a problem. So, I think quantities have to, and then the next thing is the compound in these things. Can I have a banner and one of these? Can I have a banner and, I mean, it's, we look like a rummage sale at times, that, when we go through our community, so.
Rummage sale signs is the next one. Do we wanna do anything with that? We currently are silent on the, on it right now. But they've really been proliferating lately. People have been really good about getting out there and putting out the word on their corner, and the next corner, and the next corner, and the next corner. I was researching some of the other communities, and one thing I come up with is says, "A garage or yard or rummage sale sign is not larger than two feet by two feet, four square feet, to be displayed only on private property for no more than four days and any six-month period are permitted. Such sign shall be removed the day following the sale. One per zoning lot in residential districts." I don't know if I wanna get that carried away or not, but, so they can have one rummage sale sign on their property.
It don't bother me. Just take them down at night. Otherwise, they sit there and they're hanging and they're tattered, hanging on the poles. Just go, go retrieve them at the end, maybe.
Well, right now, we're silent on the issue, so we don't have any jurisdiction over it at all, unless we do pass and say, decide for sure that nothing's allowed in the right-of-way. I did send out a survey, and I'm sorry I did get out late, late last week with it, so I only got four replies back on it, but all four of the communities that responded, Aberdeen, Hereon, Yankton, and Peers, do not allow any political signs, uh, for sale signs, or rummage sale signs, or anything else to be in their public right-of-way. Nobody's called back or informed me back that they were allowed. Just FYI. But that's one of the other topics I was hoping for some clarification on, that we can decide whether we're gonna allow political signs and for sale signs to be in the public right-of-way or not? Or garbage saying signs, or garage sale signs?
Part of the challenge you have with that is, when somebody lives back four blocks from a main street, then every corner and every block has one for blocks, to get you to that, that rummage sale. And on my personal note is, I end up with a lot of them in my front yard that nobody ever asks, and I think that's wrong, that, that they are placed there. So I go take them. I never had anybody come get them, so. But I think, again, it, it's, I don't personally have a problem with them, but
I, I would be in favor of banning it from the public right-of-way. I remember when I campaigned two years ago, I was very cognizant of where I put my campaign signs, and I made darn sure that I did not put them in the public right-of-way, and I don't think that's too much to, uh, to expect in general of people that put out those kinds of signs.
Well, in twenty-one eighty-twenty-six, restrictions of signs located in the public right-of-way. Excuse me, our current ordinance does not allow it, so I mean, it's, we've been loose and lax on it, cause we've never had the full support to, uh, to enforce it, which we're looking for now, if that's what the channel we wanna take, or do we wanna modify it to allow certain things to be there or not, so.
I don't, I don't think it's a big, you know, especially in a residential area. If you put them out in your boulevard, I don't think that's a big issue. People are gonna put them out there anyway, and how are you gonna police it during an election year? You're gonna drive around town continuously and pull signs out, cause that's where they're gonna end up.
The other one would be in realtor signs, I mean, those are, some of those are in the boulevard, correct?
Both of them.
So there are some areas where you can put realtor signs on the actual yard due to differences with landscaping, or just how it is, unless they would come up with a different type of sign. So, that would be one where it's there for a limited amount of time, hopefully, for most of those people. But, as it sits right now, we have nothing in place, other than it's not supposed to be there, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Right, so, right now, as our ordinance is with no modification
They're not allowed.
Realtor signs, political signs
Political signs.
Are illegal to be in the public right-of-way.
Correct. Other things allowed is, like on Main Street, we have oning signs and stuff like that. The onings are allowed to go over the public sidewalk, and you're allowed to even put a sign underneath them, on like Main Street. And then, of course, our area identification signs, either by us or the state, is allowed in the public right-of-way.
And I have a problem having ordinances that aren't enforced. I think if there's no stomach to enforce this, we should allow it. If, if you are saying this is our new sign code, from now on, we're going to enforce it, and you don't want that enforced, please exempt it. Please allow it, because the problem that we've had with our code to this point is that we have not enforced it, and it's because it's impossible to enforce. And we're probably making it more clear, but if you really don't have the stomach to face the property owners complaining that you won't let them put the sign in their boulevard, write something in here that allows it.
I would personally allow realtor signs and things as long as they're, you know they're gonna be a short-term item. And what about at the lake, there's some areas where there is no yard. I mean, let's be honest, they don't have a yard because their front yard is the road, or the lakeside. We call their, their lea- legally, it's the front yard, but the lakeside is technically the front for most of those people.
I, I personally, you know, I'm gonna qualify just, just a little bit, but I have never had anybody complain to me about a realtor sign, uh, uh, what I'm gonna call a normal-sized realtor sign. I do think if we're gonna allow it in the right-of-way, we have to, there needs to be a maximum size.
Yep.
Because I don't want a realtor sign, cause I've seen some of them now, there's one of the realty companies that it's like two or three times the height of a normal real estate sign. Well, now you got problems, because you, you do have potential danger of visibility and such. So I think we need to create, establish a standard sign size, a maximum one that could be in the right-of-way. And then, that goes, I don't have a problem with the political signs, the little ones. Um, now, if you're gonna have a great big four-by-eight, then it can't be in the right-of-way. You know, it needs to be someplace else. Realty signs, if we come up with signs, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with rummage sale signs. Now, I've never been, I've never had people complain about any one of those three items, and so, if the people aren't complaining, then I'm not sure that we should have it included. I haven't. I don't know if any of you have or not, so.
What's the maximum-sized political sign you can have in a residential area?
I don't.
It's four-by-eight, thirty-two square.
Thirty-two square feet.
See, and I think that should get on, in, in any residential area, you shouldn't be able to put anything bigger than the, the small signs, cause you, who wants your neighbor with a four-by, four-by-four sign or a big sign out?
According to our sign guy, they're two foot by four feet. Three feet by four feet, two foot by three.
Yeah, but I'm talking like a political sign?
You said the realtor sign is limited to six square feet.
Right, what about political signs?
Thirty-two square feet is the maximum. Though, the typical big ones are, um, four-by-four.
I think that's too big for a residential area.
I mean, I, I don't disagree with any of it. I just think that you should say what you want and enforce it. And if, if you're, if you're okay with the status quo, which is everybody puts signs in the boulevard, in the right-of-way, they put realtor signs, they put political signs of any size, then spell that out, that they're allowed in the right-of-way. If, if you're only okay with the small ones, say, maximum size, can be allowed.
I would personally be, I'd rather be okay with the six-square-feet of sign. Political, or realtor, or any of the other ones in general. I think that is, anything more than that, I mean, do you need a four-by-four sign?
Well, Adam, the, well, I think, when it comes to political signs, I'm with John, I think they should be smaller than that, because a lot of people don't have one in their yard. They got this one for senate, this one for mayor, this one for council, this one for whatever the, you know, the, the ballot issue is. And so you could have a multitude of those things in somebody's yard, and if they are literally all the size of a, a real estate sign, that's pretty large. One is not a problem. Three, four, five, and plus your house is for sale, so six. Now you've got, I mean, and that's what happens, and we say it doesn't, but it does, it, it happens.
I'm more concerned like what used to be in, like Crawford Feener Chapel on that corner, you know, where they'd have fifteen political signs, and they'd all be four-by-each sheets. You know, they're thirty-two square feet, and you'd have twelve of them out there by all different parties. So, if we limit it to a two-by-three or a six-square-foot sign, at least you're gonna limit the size on some of that stuff.
But I don't mind a, a politi- a bigger political sign in a commercial district, but residential area, they should be the, the small ones. What are they, twelve, twelve-by-twenty-four, or whatever the standard?
I'd like to comment just a little bit. Um, I, I know we're talking about the comfort level of any sign, let's call it, whether it's whatever type, being in the boulevard. And I would lobby for caution in allowing signs in the boulevard, from a multiple noted point of view. Okay, you allow them in the right-of-way, so they're gonna be properly positioned in certain conditions. But in my career, I have seen them propped up against fire hydrants. I've seen them fastened to stop signs, every light pole along a block. So they're not only just occupying grass space, they're also starting to infringe on other utilities within that boulevard. And in some cases, in, in this town in particular, a month ago, we had a s- rummage sale sign that was strapped to a chair that was sitting in the middle of the boulevard out on the street in the parking lot on Broadway. So, once you cross the sidewalk, it's a free-for-all. And now, whether we get complaints or not, that's a different story. It's a matter of how much public intrusion do you start with and allow to continue to happen? Most of the communities I've worked for do ban signs from the boulevard. And, yes, it is a pain in the hump to try to, um, enforce it, but I have seen where signs are collected on a Friday afternoon, knowing the rummage sale is Saturday morning, and, of course, the phone rings, and you say, yeah, you can come get your sign down at City Hall, but you can't put it back where you had it when you left it. And I mean, just be cautious on how you let the signs proceed in the, in the right-of-way, because it, it does become a problem when it's fastened to a sign that's intended for other, other public use, and it can be, it can become a nuisance.
Can we put it in there that they have to be a freestanding sign?
You can make whatever requirements that you want, size, location. I mean, obviously, you don't want it in the site triangle.
Right.
So, you'd have to specify that.
I mean, we could go with the same thing they do for the political signs, where it tells you where you can put them and where you can't.
Maximum number.
Ken, don't we have, isn't it against the ordinance to put it on a poll? A utility poll?
Well, the new scavenger sign section for sure does.
Well, unlike, you can't put it on a utility poll, you can't put it on a yield sign, or a
That's correct.
School zone poll, or any of them, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we do have that in language, so.
I think if you state it has to be a freestanding sign, all larger than six-square-feet, I would be okay with that. Freestanding means that either has its own base, or they're using something else as a base.
Like a chair.
Not a stop sign or a chair. Not a stop sign or a chair, but it has to be a freestanding sign that goes into the ground that's removable, without.
How big is a Realtor, how, how big's a standard Realtor sign?
Six square feet.
I don't think you need political signs that big, Realtor signs are fine. Political signs, the smaller average size, and whatever with rummage sale signs. Probably the rummage sale signs, that's the biggest one, cuz nobody takes them down. To me, if the sun rises on a, on a rummage sale sign in the morning, it's illegal. It, it should be taken down that night.
Are you suggesting that you have different performance standards for each message?
Well, each type.
If you're selling a house, you can have six square feet, if you're selling a political.
We got, we got already in the ordinance, there's all kinds of sizes in there anyway. So you could say political signs are whatever size, and Realtor signs are whatever, it's, it's all over on the ordinance, what, what rules strict for sizes.
I mean, that, we've done that before, where we've set up a matrix, or whatever, and just said, here's what they are. You know, and so that, you could deal with both sign and quantity on something like that.
I understand what Shane is saying, but I don't think Realtor signs and rummage sale signs, and I don't think they really have too much of a, I've never heard a complaint about any of them. People just go with it, so, I wouldn't get, to me, it wouldn't bother if we didn't deal with that, but I think the sign size is a big deal, but, especially in the residential. But, the rest of them, I think they, they've gone along very, very well without having any other restriction.
Well, if we can get through the various types of issues, then, and, and then maybe our first, our first, which is, this is probably the hundredth version of this sign code that we've had. Uh, I'll call it the first one, the next one. Um, you know, if we find that the whole right-of-way issue becomes an issue, once we make these modifications, then we'll be back here with some type of language to deal with that issue. If it's not an issue, um, then, don't make it one. I guess where I'm at.
Can, can we not?
We've been making exceptions for years.
Right. We can put that directly in the ordinance, so we can exempt real estate signs?
Yep, we can do basically whatever we want.
Twenty-one eighty-two, twenty-six, just make it number five, and you could put political and retail signs, and but not greater than six foot if you want, or six square feet or something. And then if they're bigger than that, then they gotta go back on somebody's private property.
Yep.
No, but we still don't want, you still don't wanna, you don't wanna Realtor sign any bigger than that, even on your own property.
Well, that's what we don't know, is it six square feet?
Right, in a resi- in a residential area?
Yep.
Is it any area, or just residential, Ken?
It's any area, so once you get to the bigger acreages, then you're allowed bigger signs, but.
Ken, can they have?
Just a single residential lot, or, or, or commercial lot even, unless it's up to like a size of an acre or something, then that's all you're allowed anyways.
Can, can they have one on each frontage, so if I'm on a corner?
It says one on each frontage, but we could limit it to one.
I don't, and I don't have a problem with that, I really don't, I, I'm okay with that. I, again, it all comes down to now, I saw one today, and actually I have a picture, some pictures, but it's a corner lot, but they got one in the front and one right on the corner, so if you're coming on that corner, you know, technically, it should be down farther on the other side, but.
Typically, a clearville triangle, it's less than three foot, it can, it's not an obstruction.
Unless you're in a low car.
Yep.
But, I'm, as far as the idea of one on each, uh, frontage, I don't have a problem with that. As long as the size is controlled, location is controlled.
So is that a suggestion then, political?
That's my suggestion.
Not larger, not, not up to six square feet?
Yes.
Not the political signs, though. Oh, really? What's, I think standard is.
Six square feet, Ken.
No, they're eighteen by, what, they eighteen by twenty-four is about standard political sign, the smaller ones. I mean, if you allow three by three, pretty soon you're gonna have everybody in town, everybody that's gonna run for.
Two by three, or three by two.
You could specify right in the.
But they, but they get too big.
Right in the exception that political signs not exceed whatever.
I don't know, there's a standard size for them, I don't know what it is.
You guys all, right, you've all bought them, haven't you, don't you know what size they are?
Eighteen by twenty-four.
They're, I know, I, I had them, and I think they're gross, I think political signs are grotesque, and I had them myself.
That's why I took yours out.
They end up everywhere.
So that's like three square feet, or four square feet then, it's actually three point five, probably? Give me a number.
Eighteen by twenty-four.
Eighteen by twenty-four.
Whatever that is.
Eighteen by twenty-four, whatever that equals.
Okay.
Be three.
Ken, are there other ones that you wanna?
Uh, yeah, I did want to, I'm sorry, yeah.
Put them up.
Um, again, with back to the banners, that does not exceed twenty-four square feet, uh, two or more streets, not more than two banner will be allowed, not no more than one banner will be allowed for, to face any street or public way. Again, twenty-four squares is, uh, is securely fenced, and I guess if, we was pretty good on that, just wanted to enforce it as it is, right?
Banners?
Yep.
Well, we gotta make sure that we
One per business.
Clearly write that it's not, it's one, it's one per business, not one for business, it's one per actual business, not one per business location. In other words, if there's seven businesses, one business can't have seven, it can have one. I, I wanna share some pictures that, that I took today, and, and like, this is, um, I'm actually, I'm stopped at the stoplight. But I'm looking to the south on Highway eighty-one, at the corner of, on the cowboy property, okay?
What? Shane, can you zoom in a little bit?
And, what you have, to the left are the two big signs that, for the property itself, but then you got a banner, right there. And now this one just showed up, that's a temporary thing, I don't know, it's a barn dance. And then they sell some of their items out there, uh, deer shacks, and then going to the south, there's three beer banners. Now, I don't know if that's what we want our community to look like, I.
The beer shacks aren't really signs.
No, but we do have.
We define that under a different section of the ordinance.
Right, which is outside storage of property for sale, correct? There, there are restrictions on that, right?
They're not allowed in the right of way.
So, anyway, that, the whole thing.
Is that not right of way?
Again, I'll go back to it, the problem isn't any one of those items, but we got a dozen of them out there. And they all add up, and it looks like heck. Can you go to a different picture? Here it is from the different angle, so you come into Watertown, and by golly, you know we sell beer, and then you can take it to your deer shack. Here's a good example, we've talked about this one, they're having a truckload mattress sale.
And we sent them a letter today that that's illegal from our previous conversation, we're defining that.
Okay, truckload sale, if you look to the left, you can't see it, there's one of those flag things, what do you call them? Those feather flags, and actually, right behind this, there's another one, so click the next picture. And then also on their, their sign up there, it says they're having a mattress sale. Click the next one, there's the other feather sign, so by golly, you're not gonna, if you need a mattress, you know, right where to go, right there. Again, that's a problem, what is it, okay, this is the storage buildings that somehow showed up between Arby's and the Knit Nook.
Yeah, this was the one I was gonna bring up, too, so.
Okay, so we got this thing, next picture.
It's not a sign, though.
And then you've got that, yes, it is a sign.
No, it's not a sign.
Is it being used for storage?
No, it's being used for, as a rent, it's no different than the cars across the road, or the boats on the other side.
Is this what we allow in our community?
I'm just saying, it's not under the sign ordinances, when, where it shouldn't be regulated.
Okay.
If, if there was a big sign on there that said eat at Arby's, or go to the mall.
Okay, is, is the mattress sale advertising?
The mattress sale is advertising.
Okay, then why does this not advertise when it has a sign on it, says, says call my, and here's the number that says for rent?
Cuz the other one doesn't say truck for sale, it said mattress for sale, and it was a truck. This, this is a storage container that's for rent or sale. I'm just saying, I, I don't say it's good or right, I'm just saying the sign ordinance is not the place to regulate it.
Go to the next one. I got an email today on this one, from this gentleman, and said how important that these little signs are to him, for his business. I don't disagree with that. He's got seven signs for his hot tub sale.
Yeah, I don't think any of them should be allowed.
Okay, he got two here on the left-hand side, he got a banner on that little white building, that's a portable building. Go to the right, or do the next picture. He's got that great big one, we got a state fair sale, and then he's got a little one to the right of that, or down below it, whatever it is. Now, go to the next one, and out on two twelve, he's got that one, and then look down farther, right there, he's got another big one. You've got seven signs for one hot tub sale.
I think we should be limiting.
I think it's a little excess. Here's one where you got, this is the one I was telling you about, that's got the two signs on the one property for sale. And one says sale pending, and it's, and it's had that on there, but this one's right by the fire hydrant.
See, and that's the example, if the fire truck had to roll up there and start putting out a fire, or hook up to that thing, that's pretty close.
I'm sure they could just knock it down, but it is in the site triangle.
And even if it's a corner lot, does it really have to have two?
I don't know that, but I don't want it there, even if there's only one allowed, that's not the place for it. But, to me, if you're gonna have it there, it should be on, literally on the sides, the two sides, and I don't have it. And then there's a zillion of these pictures, if you wanna see them, there's that, that's been there forever, go to the next one. That one's been like that for weeks. Um, here we go onto the portable signs again, that this property has two or three signs on it, back out of that just a little bit. Go up to the actual sign, the sign itself, the backside of that is all broken out. Um, now go to the next one. Now here we've got a realty company that, until just two days ago, was advertising some micro grooming. Not exactly sure what that is, that's something to do your eyelashes, or something. It's just constant, it's just, it just go and go and go, and, and they're everywhere, and again, any one of them is not the problem. It's just that they're everywhere.
I don't disagree.
You know, Marco signs, Marco Pizza down there, I don't think we'd look at that one, they had six signs in a row.
I think three of Marco's, the other three are Sweet Corn.
Nope, there were six, I got the picture, there's six pictures, or six of them, that said we deliver. And three, three or four were on their property, and two on the property to the west of them, and then there was a Georgia Peaches, or something, Colorado Peaches, a head, Sweet Corn a head, and then across the street was the, the place with their, all their signs, and then you get down farther, it's just continuous.
I think those guys should be limited, too, I think they should not be allowed more than one sign, it must be in the proximity of their store, or sale, or tent, or whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, I just would, I would, I don't wanna take opportunity away from people, but a comment was made to me, and I shared this with Adam, there was a gentleman that had come to town here for an event. Didn't know who he was, but I just got to talking to him, asked him what he was here for, says we've got a great community. But he says, it looks like you guys are a town of a, a big rummage sale, with all the signs you have, and with all the stuff they have on boulevards for sale. That's an impression that somebody gets when they came into our community, and I think that's pretty unfortunate. So.
Any other questions or comments, or?
I, I guess, just ask a question, I mean, Mike, you make a pretty compelling argument with what you're, what you're showing us here. What, where does that leave us relative to what we've got in front of us tonight, though?
I don't think we're ready to pass this. I really don't. Um, unless this is what we wanna be able to allow in our community.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you necessarily, but, we've been at this for, what, a year and a half, we've had, what, nine meetings, of which half of those are open to the public, I don't know what kind of attendance we got from the public. Uh, I guess my question is, uh, w- we keep beating away at this, are we gonna come up with anything different or better, uh, at the end of the day?
In all fairness, the primary work that was done was on, it was initiated on the off-premise portable signs, that's where a vast majority of the work was done. It really, there wasn't much focus on any of this, was there?
Uh, not a lot.
Very little, very little.
It was off-premise and the portable.
Yeah. And I can't tell you, the things that I, that I showed you in here, I can't tell you which ones of those items technically today are against ordinance, I don't know that, all I can tell you is, this is what we have all over our community. And so, I think it needs more work, not, I think from the, the primary issue, Glenn, Glenn, I've been, I was nine years on plan commission, six years on this, and, and, so in fifteen years, we've been working on sign ordinance language, cuz it happened all the time. And my guess is, when I'm dead and gone, we'll still be talking about it. Um, but, somehow, we gotta get this thing put to bed, and I agree with the mayor, it, look, let's get something that we want and need, and then we enforce it, and we move on. But, right now, not only do we not enforce it, but we, we have stuff we know we want, we have stuff we know we don't want. You know, somewhere along the line, we just gotta draw a line, because we can talk about these flag, feather flags, it'll be something else tomorrow. And, you know, again, I don't disagree that, that they're good marketing tools, but should our whole community go through the pains of putting up with all this stuff all the time, and that represents what our community looks like, so.
Ken, do we have anything in place where you can do a temporary sign, like a three-day sign? Where you can do like a temporary for, if you're doing a, a sale or event, ten-day sign?
Portable signs.
Just the portable ones?
Portables, yep, but if you're a not-for-profit, you can do some other stuff, banners, stuff.
But if you're a business and you're hosting an event for a weekend sale, or something along those lines?
Brand-new, but, no, not as a sale, a brand-new grand opening business has some leeways to do stuff for a couple of weeks. But if you just wanna do a sale in the middle of the week, then you're limited back to the banners that you're allowed to put on there right now, and you're limited to portable signs.
Is there any sort of an issue with ru- running like a three-day sign, or a, a five-day sign order? I don't know, I'm just asking, I'm aware of this issue, but I haven't sat through enough of them.
So you're saying getting permitting for it?
Yeah, you permit for a weekend deal, or a seven-day sign, or, I don't, I don't know, I'm just asking if that's an option. Then, at least then, we have, starting on the fifth, and it's going till the eighth, and we're done.
Well, we've been fighting with the portable sign thing for over three years, and we haven't even got permission to change over to the last one we revised, so. Cuz it's still in the courts.
So you're saying no.
Ken, if we don't pass this, where does it go? Where, let's say we don't pass this.
We have a sign code.
What?
We just don't enforce it.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's, we can't stomach it, it's.
All right.
It goes back to the drawing board for more revisions, I guess, but otherwise, we're just looking for support and backing to enforce what we have on the books.
This is an effort to try and improve it, and, and make it a little more palatable, and, um, keep it up with what the public demands, I mean, you, you definitely, you've got competing concerns.
I would say, if we can't pass something that works for everyone, just enforce the ones that are there now, we'll see how that goes.
No matter what we do, this is one of those items where we will always have pushback. We will always have people that aren't happy, and that's gonna be very similar to one of our topics that we have talked about in the past, and that we will talk about tonight, and that is recreational vehicle parking. And, it's uncomfortable for some, it's difficult for some, but, in the long and the short of that, what has been implemented, I think, has been overall a good thing for Watertown. And I think that's the same approach that we have to take with this thing, is what is fair and reasonable, without the excess is what gets in, is, gets people's ire up, quite frankly. And, how do we, how do we eliminate that excess? And unfortunately, what that often means is tight restrictions on the. And unfortunately, what that often means is tight restrictions on the ordinance, because that's the only way you can do it. Because it's on a per-property basis. And. You know, I'm I'm the same way, I'm I'm with Sarah on this, if we can't, if we can't or don't have the guts to pass something and then enforce it, then take the thing off the books and let the chips fall where they may. But if we can get something that's reasonable and we're committed to enforcing it, then that's what we should do.
Well, this is what we have before you, a really good first step, though. I mean, there's a lot of work going in here and a lot of revisions, there's a lot of tightening up of a lot of things. And I realize that possibly, maybe with the addendum of the political and rental signs being added in there, I think what you have on before you is a good start. Like I said, it's it's gonna go forever, it's never gonna change, this is one of those that always changes and always involves, so.
Just as an example, what you talked about those feather signs, this ordinance revision would take care of those, those would go away. The sign on the truck for the mattress sale, that would go away, um just as a few examples. I don't know how well it addresses the hot tub sale um item, but some of these things would go away, and I guess, um, you know, it.
Actually, hot tub sale would go away under the current ordinance too.
So, is that, how is that, Ken?
It's gonna be considered a scavenger sign, if it's not permitted, then it's not gonna be allowed. It's not a retail, it's not a for-sale sign, there's.
You mean, so all those little signs would not be allowed?
All the Marco Pizza's one will be allowed, even the ones for the for the vendor typically wouldn't be allowed, whether they want to allow them one sign as a sandwich board to go at their thing or not, so. Those are all abolished with what's in front of you right now.
You called that a scavenger sign?
Yep.
Is that defined in our?
You did.
That's with what's proposed, or that's what's on the book, Ken?
Uh, it's proposed.
What about the storage unit?
Well, that's up to you guys wherever you're at, to me, that's a storage unit, it's not a sign, it needs to be regulated, but not within the sign code.
Can't that fall with under our RV and stuff? Seriously, you have to have a place for them with your RV parking and stuff?
I I think, can I, in a way, I know where you're coming from on it, but when it has the sign on the side and that's the purpose of being there, if that sign wasn't there, they don't have product or stuff.
For sale or rent.
Says, that's exactly right.
On the other side, for sale or rent.
And that shouldn't be there either.
That shouldn't be, what about the cars across the road?
How is it different from displaying cars for sale on a lot that has nothing but cars for sale?
I think here's the difference, there is a business, there is a business that is at that location, just like you have a house when you can have a garage, right? You can't have a garage in a residential area without a primary facility, a primary house, correct? I can't just have a lot in a residential area with a garage.
Lease that property, he's controlling property, he doesn't have an office.
I understand that.
Shouldn't they have a parking space there for it?
Don't we have a requirement on our books for how merchandise can be displayed or stored outside?
Yes.
Okay, I think that needs to get looked at, and that's probably where this falls into. Because I, do we want bare lots with all kinds of stuff just sitting out there without any business?
We have quite a few of them.
Okay, that's not what I asked.
Okay, but.
That what we want?
If you're gonna take that away from the new ones that have just popped up, you've you've also gotta take away the guy who's made his living for ten years selling cars on a lot with nothing but cars.
Okay, does he not have a little shack or something there that he works out of and is actually there?
I don't know that they all do, I think some of them do, and those maybe would be allowed by what you're saying.
Okay, I think that would, you take like Jimmy's Auto, for example, is what it is. He had a business there, and that's where he store, he had his product, would make sense to have them indoors. I I, that's a whole nother issue, but I think that that's part of this, because it comes down to the look of a community.
I don't disagree, I mean, I'm just saying, yeah, I I regulate it great, but I just don't think it's in this one.
Yeah, just it, make sure it's enforceable and that you're going to uniformly enforce it on everyone, not just a few. Running short on time, can, do you wanna give a two-minute update on the storm shelter, and then we'll take a break before the council meeting?
Thank you, Ken.
Okay. The images I'm about to show you are somewhat dated now, I mean, this project has advanced well beyond where we're at. Just that, for those people that don't have time to drive out and look at it, um, this is the new storm shelter that's being built out uh on the Anza soccer complex. And as you can tell, the main portion of the building's been erected here, um, looks, it's starting to look great. I mean, I like the colors that we chose, the burnished block are looking pretty sharp. So the building's pretty much up, this is, uh, the bathroom walls are up on the interior, um, doing some work. Door frames uh haven't arrived yet, but that's some of the last work that's um still remaining is is the frame and fixture work. This is a shot at the roof, this roof now has been completely covered with its finished layer of concrete and working, uh, looking quite different than this photo. So tha- that's about where we're at, and um we expect to be wrapping this up by the end of September if all the hardware shows up. So just kinda give you an idea uh where that project's at.
Shane, do you remember the numbers right off the top of your head? What what were the dollars that we're looking at, and then I know we got some grant money that came in for this, do you have those right offhand?
Testing my memory, but um the overall project was around two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty thousand. And the city's uh portion of that, I believe, was in the seventy to seventy-five thousand range. I I don't remember the exact numbers, but that was about the percentage that it shook out. And um I know it's an expensive building, but it's built for a specific service. And um, you know, you don't build a storm-worthy shelter without spending a little bit of money to make sure that the people that are in it are safe, so.
We, as I recall, we were able to shave some of it, some costs off from some of the original estimates that we got on that, is that correct?
Right, we changed some of the fixtures and um took some benches and different things out of the interior that we can always add later if we get more funding or wanna change the the use of the building slightly. I mean, we talked about making it a dual-purpose building at some point if 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 it works into the scheme of things, but.
Okay, thank you, Shane. We're adjourned, we'll see you back at seven.